Welcome to Millbrae City Council Special Council Meeting tonight. This is a public meeting or public hearing number two in the districting of Millbrae City Council elections. City Clerk, could you please call roll?
Sorry about that. Councilmember Oliver. Member Fun.
Here.
Councilmember Papin.
Here.
Mayor Schneider.
Here.
Four members of the city council are present with Vice Mayor Leiva being excused.
Thank you, and if you could all please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, this is our second hearing, and the city clerk is going to explain our process for anyone who needs what we are talking about translated into Mandarin or Spanish. Take it away, City Clerk Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. So we do have interpretation services in Chinese, Mandarin, and Spanish. At this time, I'd like to call on Prudence. She is one of our Mandarin interpreters to give the public instruction on how they can access translation services in Mandarin.
Okay. 同声传翻译服务
Thank you, Prudence.
Sure.
Now, if I can ask on Javier, if he can please give our public instructions on Spanish, if they need Spanish interpretation, please. I think you are, you're on mute, Javier. I don't think we can hear you, Javier. I must have a little bit of issues. Is Andrea available? She's our other Spanish interpreter. Now Javier, can you hear me? Okay, it seems like he can hear me, but I can't hear him.
Yeah, Javier, we could hear you. I think, I think you were actually on the other icon, and we're only getting on the other channel.
Okay, I can translate the Spanish. A todos que están aquí con nosotros esta noche y necesitan servicios para oír en español tenemos un abajo de la pantalla donde es como un globo que dice interpretación por favor puede clickear ahí y se puede meter en el cuarto de español para ganar servicios traducidos en español de la junta esta noche. Gracias. Okay, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, City Clerk Gonzalez, and thank you Javier. We will get it. We have several more meetings to get all the technology to work with us. With that, City Manager, if you can start us off and introduce our consultant.
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor. We do have with us Mr. Paul Mitchell from Redistricting Partners. Mr. Mitchell and his firm are consultants, demographers, that have done the initial demographic study and will continue to be with us as we go through this process to form new council districts within the city of Millbrae. One of the pressing questions, and I know Paul will get into it through his presentation, but also discussion this evening. So, so we, so Paul and his staff and you all, the community, can start to draw maps, and that is, should this community, should the city of Millbrae have four council districts and an at-large mayor, or five council districts and a rotating mayor? And so just keep that in mind because we really need that feedback as we, as we move forward. But I'd like to just kind of do some preface on the meeting. As the mayor said, I'm Tom Williams, City Manager. This is the second meeting. The first meeting and this meeting are information meetings that we can provide information out to the community on what we're doing and why we're doing it, and what the process is for all of you to be engaged in formation of the districts. And if you go to the next slide, please. So, how did we get here? A little bit of background. On November 27, 2020, the city received a letter from a Mr. Yo-Yo Ju claiming that the city's at-large election system violated the California Voters' Rights Act. At that time, Mr. Ju's letter did not contain all of the required elements to constitute a valid claim under CVRA. CVRA again is California Voters' Rights Act. On March 5th, we receive, on March 5th, 2021, we received a letter from an attorney by the name of Mr. Kevin Shankman. It was Mr. Yo-Yo Ju's attorney claiming that the city's at-large electoral system violated the California Voters' Rights Act. And, and Mr. Mitchell will get into that a little bit in his presentation of what those findings are. But in the letter, it specifically in quotes here, you can see on the screen, that I write on behalf of our client, Southwest Voter Registration Education Project, and its members residing within the city of Millbrae, as well as Yo-Yo Ju. Millbrae relies upon at-large election system for electing candidates to its governing board. Moreover, voting within the city is racially polarized, resulting in minority vote dilution, and therefore, the city at-large elections violate the California Voter Rights Act of 2001. Next slide, please. So Mr. Shankman has threatened litigation unless the city voluntarily converts to district-based districts, council districts. Mr. Shankman has asserted and, and did not provide any proof to the city of his assertion that the city's at-large elections do dilute the ability of certain ethnicities, specifically the Latino population and to some extent, the Asian population, which are both protected ethnicity or protected classes within the law under the California Voters' Rights Act. And then, you know, city, as I think a lot of people know, we're very small geographically. We are a fully integrated community. And a lot of inquiries as to, you know, it doesn't make any sense for a city like Millbrae that's integrated and geographically small to have to go to district elections, so why do we have to do it? Unfortunately, CVRA data does not provide an exemption for small communities that are fully integrated. It's, it's a fatal flaw with this kind of one-size-fits-all law that the state legislature did adopt. Next slide, please. So the CVRA has made it very easy for plaintiffs to prevail in lawsuits and against public entities by removing a number of procedural safeguards, like burden of proof requirements that exist under Federal Voting Rights Act, but it does not exist under the California Voters' Rights Act. Prevailing plaintiffs, in this case, Mr. Mr. Shankman, has the right to recover their reasonable attorney's fees and expert witness fees and all the costs of litigation. The city of Sunnyvale has spent upwards of $11 million trying to challenge the California Voters' Rights Act, and so a significant amount of money. Currently, the city of Santa Monica down in Southern California has challenged the Voters' Rights Act. It is, arguments have been heard at the Supreme Court, state Supreme Court level, and municipalities are anxiously awaiting for that court decision, which I understand should be sometime the first of the year. But to comply right now with Voters' Rights Act, the city had to adopt a resolution of intent by October 15th. Another element of the law is that Mr. Shankman, by raising this issue and, and making these allegations, we capped the attorney's fees under the law that, that he's eligible to receive, and that cap under the law is $30,000. So by adopting the resolution intent to move forward with district formation, the city council has protected the fiscal wherewithal of the city and hasn't exposed the city to further very expensive multimillion-dollar, you know, litigation and exposure. Not moving forward with this resolution of intent, as I mentioned, would expose the city to millions of dollars in plaintiff costs. So October 12th of this year, the city council just last month did adopt Resolution 21-70, which is the intent to move forward with formation of council districts. Next slide, please. So this is a public meeting schedule. So as I mentioned, the first required meeting under the law and information meeting was, was Tuesday, November 9th. This evening is the second information meeting to solicit community input and share this information. On Saturday, December 4th, at 10:00 a.m., we will have a community workshop. This will be held in the Great Room at, at our Temporary Recreation Center. This is, this is for the purpose of providing the community the opportunity to come in and start drawing maps. We will have laptops, and Mr. Mitchell's firm has a, a great software that you can log on to our computers, and you're going to be able to do this at home as well. We will have those links, and you can draw your maps. And one of the things that Mr. Mitchell will get into is what the law says in terms of balancing out populations within the maps. And his software is pretty nifty in being able to take the population and draw your maps and stay within that level of deviation that, that's, that's allowed or limited by law. December 8th, then, is a special city council study session again to solicit community input due to the time constraints that the state law has put on, on the city or any community municipality that's, that is required to move to district elections, which by the way, are all cities in California and all school districts. And, and so every city, every municipality, unless this law has changed, will have to move to district, city council district elections. But December 8th is really a point in time, a milestone, that the council will start to decide whether we, inhering input from the community, whether we form four districts and an at-large mayor, or five council districts and a annual rotating mayor. So between now and then, we really need the community's feedback and input on that, on that decision. Saturday, December 18th, we will have a, another community workshop. This again is just to solicit additional information from the community. Again, that December 18th meeting will be at the Great Room in the Temporary Recreation Center. I'll back up. The Wednesday, December 8th, will be another Zoom meeting that will be with the council. The December 4th, Saturday, December 4th, and Saturday, December 18th are just open houses. It's, it's a time for the community to come in, then again, draw maps and, and provide input and, and ask questions. Then, then we, you know, head into the holidays, and January 11th is the third meeting and required public hearing. And that is where Mr. Mitch, Mr. Mitchell will provide his first draft of district maps as the demographer. And we will also share maps that we've received from the community at large or communities of interest, which will define communities of interest here, here in a few minutes. But will, the council will be able to see all of the maps. And that is January 11th. Then, January 25th is the fourth meeting. That is the second meeting that the city council will continue to review maps. And then we move to January 26th through February 21st. Again, these are just additional meetings. We need as much community input from the citizens of Millbrae. And again, those, those communities of interest to have enough opportunity to understand what we're doing, understand this, and draw maps for district, council district formation. Tuesday, February 22nd, a very important meeting. This is the fifth and final meeting that's required by law where the council must adopt the actual council districts. And whatever is adopted on February 22nd will then be submitted to the voter, register of voters, and that, those districts will be what the voters vote for in the election of November 2022. Next slide, please. So this meeting, I'm going to hand it over to our Assistant City Clerk, Mr. Eduardo Gonzalez, to take you through this particular slide. Kind of our, our hashtag is, is configuremillbrae.org. I understand that a lot of people, for the first time, you know, may, this, this may be a little bit confusing, but if you just remember, configuremillbrae.org, that is our website that you can go to and get a information in detail. And also, you'll be able to access the mapping software. So Eduardo, we also have this in English, Chinese, and Spanish, but I'll hand it over to Eduardo to kind of take you through this website and especially this community of interest form and explain what that is and the importance of everyone filling out that form.
Thank you very much, City Manager Williams. Good evening, everyone. So yes, I will go through this slide, and as Tom mentioned, we do have a dedicated website specifically geared towards our transition to district elections. If I can ask you to please click on the website. Okay. So milk configuremillbrae.org is our website. Here is our homepage. We have information on, you know, why the process is going on. You know, the transition needs to be completed by March 1st, 2022, to comply with state laws. Here, we have three buttons in towards the middle process, and I'll kind of go through each webpage. I won't take up a lot of the time, but here we have these links that will link you to several pages throughout the whole website we have. If you scroll down a little bit, we have our upcoming meetings and workshops. So here you see the latest one, the November 17th. Tomorrow, it's going to change to the December 4th, which would be our next community workshop. As Tom mentioned, that one will be in person at the Millbrae Rec Center in the Great Room. So here we have, if you keep scrolling down, just the list of all of the community meetings. If you have any other meetings, we'll make sure to add them onto the schedule, so that's readily available for the public. We have also the meeting links. So if you see, for instance, Tuesday, January 25th, the Zoom meeting links there for the virtual meetings are also easily readily available for our public. If you scroll down a little bit more towards the bottom, we have our links there to our Facebook, our Instagram, our Twitter, so all of our social media, where you can get updates on district elections as well as other city events, city happening that's going on. Also, at the bottom bar, you do see the, you see several advertisements there for configureMillbrae. A little bit down towards the end of the homepage. If you want to join the mailing list to get notifications on all things district elections, please go here and enter your email, and you will be part of our mailing list to get up-to-date information. Now, scrolling all the way, I guess, go to the About webpage, please. So just going real quickly, here we have some background information on, on where the process is, why we have, we are transitioning. This will be in Chinese and in Spanish, if you scroll down. So this is just where we're at. You know, we have the different dates when the council adopted a resolution, the intent to transition. So just a little bit more background. If you click on the process and schedule, there you should see again our up-to-date meetings and workshops that we have, and we'll be adding as, as well, again, if there is additional, you scroll down a little bit more. So there you can see, you know, and as I mentioned, if you click on each one of those workshops, you'll have the information to the links and what exactly we'll be doing at that specific meeting. If you go to, we have a great FAQ, District Elections, great information here, answers a lot of questions, great resource. If you scroll down, a lot of question, and this will also be available in Chinese and Spanish as well very soon. So a lot of great resource there. And I think if you scroll all the way to the bottom, we also have links to, yeah, the California Voting Rights Act, the Fair Maps Act, amongst other things, the Federal Voting Rights Act. Just a lot of great information. I also want to point out that we do have, want to make sure I let the public know that if you guys have, want to contact anyone or have any information, we have a dedicated email address that is districtelection@ci.millbrae.ca.us where you can submit any inquiries and also submit your communities of interest forms, which I will mention in a minute. Another thing, I wanted to give everyone a phone number. They can also dial. If you have, if you need additional information, that is 650-259-373. That is the phone number to our admin office here. We have staff that will be glad to help answer any questions to our public. If you can please click on the Communities of Interest page, please. So here we, I, you know, we encourage all the public to participate and submit their, we have a Communities of Interest form that can be found here. It's in English, Spanish, and Chinese. If you scroll down a little bit, there are certain ways you guys can, and let's just go ahead and click on the English. So there's certain information that you can help guide us through this process, what, what's important to you, scroll down to page two. That you can submit this form, fill out, and provide input. It would help us greatly. Scroll down to the bottom, you can, you can either submit this Communities of Interest form by mail the, here at City Hall 621 Magnolia Avenue. We also have a water payment box that we have out in the parking lot. A lot of people are familiar, where you pay your water bills. You can also go ahead, feel free to drop it in that box if we will receive it here. And also by email, districtelections@ci.millbrae.ca.us. And if you do fill it out online, I believe you should be able to submit it directly as well. So this is for, encourages the public again to fill this out, and we want as much community input as, as we can get. Go ahead and scroll up or go back to the, if you can go back to the Communities of Interest, please. Yes, so again, those forms are in English, Spanish, Chinese. And if you go to the public meeting materials, as we go through the process, we will be adding, providing the public, you know, access to, you know, the meeting materials that we have. Here you see the ones out from the October 12th, 2021 council meeting, from the last, the public, the first public hearing on November 9th. We'll have information posted tomorrow for today's meeting, including the staff report, the meeting video, and the presentation that you will see a little bit later on. So we're going to keep having all this information available for the public. So I just wanted to kind of give a quick overview of our website. We do have a Draw Your Map webpage there that will be a little bit later on in the process. We'll make sure this is where everyone will have access to be able to draw their map. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Eduardo, City Manager.
Yeah, thank you very much. I would just like to mention, I think in my presentation, I said it was, it was Sunnyvale that challenged CVRA and had a total cost was, was right around 11 million. It was actually the city of Santa Clara, so I apologize. Sometime I have muscle memory, but it was the city of Santa Clara. All right, next slide, please. All right, now I would like to hand it over to Mr. Paul Mitchell. He is the owner of a company, Redistricting Partners. He has a wealth of experience in, as a demographer and in the subject area, and we were lucky enough that we could retain Paul and his expertise of him and his firm. So I'd like to introduce Mr. Paul Mitchell to provide you with some additional detailed information.
Thanks, and thanks a lot for having me. I do want to start just by saying that you definitely have done an excellent job with that website. The website is really the window that a lot of the public will have to this process in between your public hearings and workshops. And it's great that you are not just doing the steps that are required under the California Voting Rights Act, but also reaching that higher bar of doing all the steps required under the Fair Maps Act. And it's really great to see. So happy to be working with you and happy that you're going the extra mile with that. I'm going to cover a number of things around the California Voting Rights Act, which was already talked about a little bit, about what districting is and what it isn't. I'm going to go through some traditional redistricting principles, many of which are in a state law, either the California Voting Rights Act or the Fair Maps Act. I'll talk specifically about the Fair Maps Act. It's a new law and being implemented this redistricting cycle for the first time. And then I'll talk about how the public can participate in the process, but a lot of that has already been covered, and then go over the hearing schedule, which also was already covered a little bit. So if we go to the first slide. So when people hear about the California Voting Rights Act, oftentimes, the first thing they think is the Federal Voting Rights Act, which the Federal Voting Rights Act is an expansive law that looks at any kind of vote dilution or anything that blocks individuals from having a right to participate in our elections. And it ranges from how ballots are designed to voter registration and everything else, including redistricting. But the California Voting Rights Act is very specific. It's very much just one issue having to do with the use of at-large election systems. And the idea that an at-large election system might also be a way that voting power for certain protected classes, classes could be diluted. And it, it essentially says that if you have racially polarized voting, that you cannot have an at-large election system. And an at-large election system in the law is defined as any election system that isn't single districts with each district electing their own, in this case, council member, and not having the entire citywide election to elect your council. Racially polarized voting isn't a term we use normally in normal conversation, but racially polarized voting is really differences in voting patterns where you can look and statistically identify that race is a significant or predominant factor in how people are making election choices. And so those are the two kind of new terms or definitions under the California Voting Rights Act. It is, some of the stuff that we do under the California Voting Rights Act to convert to districts could be done under the Federal Voting Rights Act, but the California Voting Rights Act was passed in order to make it easier. One way on the next slide, one way on the next slide, on this slide, that it defines kind of a difference is that the federal law, it speaks to the idea of creating districts that don't dilute voting power for minorities as districts that are majority-minority. And the idea that if a district is a majority of one protected class, that it should have the ability to overcome any racially polarized voting, any block voting against their interests. The California Voting Rights Act introduces a new term called ability to influence. The idea that a agency would need to convert to districts if the districts that are drawn would give them an ability to influence the election in a way that they aren't able to in the at-large election system. The CVRA also, different than the Federal Voting Rights Act, guarantees attorneys that bring a claim or enforce a conversion can get reimbursed for their costs. And next slide. The, the costs for legal fees can be dramatically reduced from the, you know, $11 million example given earlier to just $30,000 adjusted for inflation if a agency follows certain rules in their conversion and does it within a certain time in a process. Next slide. If a agency follows certain rules in their conversion and does it within a certain time in a process. Next slide. So districting is the initial process of drawing lines and I have to apologize right now that myself or my staff. Will oftentimes just kind of fall into continuing to call the work we do redistricting. Of course, redistricting is the adjusting of lines after they've already been created. The first time you create lines, we could just refer to that as districting. It will determine who is eligible to run for office whereby based on where they live. And it'll determine who votes in that election. Next slide. What it doesn't determine is how you govern as a city. Or any relationship between the services that the city provides and its residents. So once we draw districts. If somebody's in one district or another, it shouldn't impact their ability to. Get the same city services they've been being provided. It shouldn't mean that they. Are unable to reach out to the government or that the government will have will be unable to reach out to them simply because of the district lines. I also want to make one point because it's come up recently. Once we do do the districts, it doesn't mean that we clean the slate and have whole all new elections within those districts. Those districts will take effect over the course of two election cycles. Next slide. The traditional redistricting principles, I'm going to go over these each in a little bit of detail. Equal size contiguous, compact, maintaining communities of interest and following. Kind of logical boundaries oftentimes in a city registering something like neighborhood boundaries. But also you could have, you know, school district boundaries or other boundaries used as a way for determining. Like where are we going to put that line in a way that makes sense to residents? So first on the relatively equal size slide, next slide. So I'm going to first cover this, next slide. So we want districts to be equal sized. And the reason we want them to be equal sized is we want everybody in the city to have equal access to their both voting. And representation power. So the equality is based on the number of people and our goal is to have districts that are within ten percent. So let's say you were drawing districts in each district, the ideal size was a hundred people. You would want the smallest district to maybe be around ninety five people and the biggest district maybe be around a hundred and five people. So that that total difference is ten percent total. The one issue that comes up is a lot of times people think, well, a really small deviation is better than a larger deviation. We've done a lot of redistricting and over the redistrictings we've done, we've really come to believe that the full ten percent deviation range is. Is more useful way to think about your redistricting. Sometimes people set an artificial bar. I want to have districts that are one percent total deviation from the biggest to the smallest. But in doing so, you end up having to divide a neighborhood or cross a street in a weird place or. You know, add in some population that really isn't part of the same community of interest as the rest of the district. And you're doing it simply because months earlier, you made some commitment that you were going to have a small one percent deviation. Not because you were looking at your reducing plan as a whole and saying, well. You know, after weighing all the communities of interest, the neighborhoods and looking at these districts, I now think that we can go to a smaller deviation. So. That ten percent deviation is really kind of a a safe ground and you should be able to work within all of that as you're determining potential. District lines. Next slide. So districts need to be contiguous. Next slide. So that means that the district shouldn't hop or jump around. You shouldn't have a district that is one part of the city and then like this community that's disconnected way over here be another part of that same district. So there is a little bit of subtlety in this, like a lot of things in redistricting. You know, there's like the literal meaning of contiguous, but then there's also other ways to think about contiguity. One way to think about it is when you have, say, an island. And in cities, you sometimes have an island, which is a incorporated part of the city that is disconnected. The city of San Diego is an example, has the big city of San Diego and then like this really long thin line down to another population down at the. U S Mexico border. So when you have something like that, like a island that's a city. Population that's separate from the city or an actual island like Treasure Island. You try to make it contiguous to the city districts based on kind of like a natural traffic pattern or. You know, just how people in Catalina Island, they make it contiguous by the ferry route. There's another aspect to it that sometimes you'll have two areas that say from a satellite photo. They look like they're contiguous, they're right next to each other. But then you actually look in there and you're like, wait. These two populations are on the either side of a huge highway that you can't cross. Or they're on other sides of a mountain or they're on other sides of the lake. And so, yeah, from a satellite photo, you can draw a circle around them and make a contiguous district that doesn't jump or pop. But when you look at the district, you say, well, functionally, these communities aren't connected in a how they live or how they travel sense. So. We might come up with conversations about contiguity and saying to ourselves like, is this area. Really actually connected to that other area that is seemingly adjacent to it. Next slide. So compactness, again, like contiguity, seems like it should be pretty literal interpretation. Something's compact. But it's more than that. Next slide. In redistricting around the country, there are dozens of mathematical equations that are used to determine compactness. The most popular of them, take. The you you give them a district and you say the volume of this district is five square miles. So you have this district and you measure the circumference of that district. And then you take a dis- a area like a sphere and measure the circumference of a perfect sphere. With that same area and you stretch those lines out and determine how similar they are. If you had a district that looked like an octopus, you can imagine it might be five square miles in area, but every arm of that octopus. Makes for a really, really, really long string compared to a circle of the same volume. There's other measures like literally one that you count every time there's a turn in the line. And every time there's a dodge or a dip and you calculate that against a district that might be more square or circle like. The third that we've seen is in one of the states, I think it was New Mexico where we're working. They use a term, they they say you can't have funny shapes. And I don't know that there's a definition of what a funny shape is, but that's their laws. You just can't have funny shapes. In California, we've actually gotten away from all these. We have a new definition in California law that says a district is compact. If it doesn't avoid nearby populations to go get far away populations. So if I have two populations adjacent to each other. And I said, well, I'm going to make this district here, but instead of grabbing this nearby population, I've got this population way on the other end of the city. And I'm going to walk my line around the edge of the city to go and grab that far away one. Well, that would be a violation of the California term for compactness because you're avoiding nearby populations to get a far away population. Next slide. Maintaining communities of interest is a key and one of the most important reasons why we do the. Public engagement piece. It's a key part of the process. A community of interest. Is kind of a family of things and I want to clarify that. You might have communities like Latinos, Asians and African Americans. That will be protected class communities and then you also have communities of interest that might be very similar kind of areas. Go to the next slide. So. Next slide. So. As I was saying, the Latinos, Asians, African Americans, they can be a Voting Rights Act community. But they also could be instances where some of these communities are forming a community of interest. That's a non racially based factor that brings them together. Or a community of interest, well, in that example, let's say it could be my community of interest is where all the. Armenian restaurants and businesses are. That's my community of interest. Or my community of interest is the local Thai town or Cambodia town. That's my community of interest. It's a. A social construct, a business or other recreation construct or different amenities that tie a community together outside of. Kind of the racial composition of that community. Then there's others like maybe a student area or maybe an area that is of commuters. Or maybe an area with more seniors or maybe an area that's more of the hillsides. And all these different things can be communities of interest. And the idea with the state law. Is that we identify communities of interest. And then we draw districts in a way that allows that community of interest to be in one district. And maximize their ability to express their representative or voting power. So the idea is to build districts around those communities, not divide them. So. This does get into like what would be kind of gerrymandering. The old idea around gerrymandering was taking a community of interest in large cases, in most cases, like a racial community, community like. Black or Asian or Latino population, taking that community. And dividing it into like five districts so that it is. Unable to elect somebody in any of those districts. But you know, maybe it would be articulated, well, we've created districts, so everybody has to care a little bit about the Latino community. But you've actually taken this community and split it into. Five different seats so that they can't have an effective voice in any of those districts. And so the idea is in the California Voting Rights Act to identify communities of interest and try to build them in as cores of districts. Next slide. So one factor of this is that. These communities of interest, like I said, they can include race or they can include cultural language or other things associated with people's. Race, but it can't be predominantly based on race. So unless there's a section two Federal Voting Rights Act issue, then we're not able to do it. Next slide. I've given some of these examples, but some examples of communities of interest would be, you know, the downtown area. Or people who live around a certain industry like the tech community or farmers or, you know. People who commute into this into San Francisco for their jobs, all these kinds of things would be communities of interest. On the next slide. There's, when you're hearing from the public about communities of interest. And there's really three questions that you want to kind of have answered. The ways that people give their input sometimes will. Are like kind of automatically answer these questions, but you'll listen for these and capture these in your testimony. One is, does a community have like a shared culture, a bond or some kind of relationship? As an example, our community of interest is, you know, commuters. And we say, well, the commuters largely live on this side of the city. Then is the community, is the community geographically located? Like, can you identify on a map where that area is? And then third, what's its relationship to the city, to the policies that you're enacting, to the governance that you're providing? And that is one of the things that is really important to help define what communities of interest really should be a focus in your redistricting. So if a community of interest is commuters. And they say that their community of interest concern is, you know, the hours that certain places that they go commute are open. That they're safe, that 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 they have lighting, that they have access to public transportation. Those might all be city issues and so that would be a valid community of interest. If somebody came and said, well, my community of interest is. You know. Federal airport aviation rules. Well, you might have a community, there might be a club of your people who really care about that issue in the city. But you might not be geographically located in just one part of the city. And you might not have a a direct connection to a city policy. So we want to have communities of interest that kind of are checking all these boxes. And if you look closely at that community of interest form, I think you'll find that it is trying to elicit these kinds of questions or these kind of answers from people. Next slide. Following city, county, local government lines and. In a city redistricting, a lot of this is neighborhoods. Trying to use neighborhoods as the unit of drawing districts. So oftentimes when we're drawing districts, we'll say, okay, well, we're going to take this downtown neighborhood and pair it with, you know, this other neighborhood that's. Has same kind of concerns and same communities of interest and we're going to make that into a district. Using neighborhoods serves a few purposes. One, it creates a rational basis for why lines are where they are. You could say, well, the line is on Main Street and Fourth and somebody might come and say, well, why did you pick fourth? Why not fifth? Why not sixth? Why not third? Well, the answer might be really simple. That's the neighborhood boundary. So when you have now a rational basis for drawing the line there, you avoid having concerns from the public or anybody else. That your line was some kind of a trick or a gerrymander. Next slide. So starting in twenty twenty, the Fair Maps Act requires additional steps for cities and counties. That are undergoing redistricting. A couple of those are are. Pieces that are really new to local redistricting and are requiring cities and counties to undergo the. Undergo redistricting in a very different way. The first is what we're doing now. And what was talked about earlier with the website. The transparency, the openness of it, the public facing aspect of redistricting. That is new and it's a challenge for a lot of agencies that haven't been used used to having that kind of openness with these kinds of processes. A second thing is that the Fair Maps Act lists rank criteria. And throughout all that rank criteria, it only discusses incumbents once. And it only discusses incumbents to say that they can't be a community of interest. So if somebody were to call in and say, I'm a candidate for office, I live here and. My interest of the city is that I want to be on the city council. That can't be part of your thinking. It can't be a part of what we do in the process. So candidates or incumbents. Their residences are not taken into account as we're drawing lines. The not drawing districts to advantage a political party is kind of superfluous. Because in most cases, you don't see districts being drawn in municipal government for political party outcomes. Very rare exceptions in California. But in the most case, for most cases, the issues at city governance aren't about Dem versus Republican, they're about issues and and policies. If we go to the next slide, we can see the city of Milbrae. And this slide is the kind of slide that we'll have as we draw districts to kind of explain what every district looks like. What this shows is that the city has a population of twenty three thousand two hundred and twenty eight. That's a census population number that's adjusted for the redistricting process. It includes a reallocation of prison population. In that, we have around sixteen thousand people that are citizen voting age population. That citizen voting age population is a proxy for eligible voters. And of those eligible voters, you have ten percent that are Latino, forty two percent that are Asian. And just one percent that are black. So those Asian populations, that forty two percent Asian population will likely be a. Key part of the line drawing process as we go about creating districts. Because there might be a need and we'll work with your legal staff. I saw Kim on this Zoom earlier. Very experienced in this particular area, but we'll look at if there's a requirement or need to draw districts. With a certain percentage of citizen voting age population, Asian representation in order to ensure that we're not. Diluting their ability to elect a candidate of choice. And so that is something that we'll address as we get through the process. On the next slide, you can see that we've had our first hearing, that November ninth hearing. This is the second public hearing and we discussed a little bit more about communities of interest. And you had a more detailed calendar earlier in the presentation. So I think maybe that's the right place to look for the, you know, real definitive dates here. But we're going to be doing this process going through February. In order to ensure that there's a long window of time for us to. Receive public input and make sure we're doing a process of redistricting that's equitable and fair and transparent and open. And we're really happy to be with you through this process and I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you. City manager, do you have any comments before we open it up to public comment?
I know, I think, you know, we're really looking forward to hearing from the community. We, you know, Paul's here, legal counsel's here. And I would just actually, you know, remember, we'd like to hear back. From the community in terms of, you know, five districts and a rotating mayor. Or four districts and and an at-large mayor. So with that, hand it back over to Paul for questions or or legal counsel or. So with that, hand it back over to Paul for questions, or, or Legal Counsel, or, or, or us as staff.
So in terms of process, we may have people on the phone and people that are here in the Zoom call, Zoom call, you can raise your hand by going under the reactions button and just raising your hand there. And if you're on the phone, Eduardo, our city clerk, will be watching that. The city manager and I discussed earlier, because this is a, it's a council meeting, but really it's a public hearing that we will ask speakers to stay to the three-minute limit. And we're also, what's going to be happening is the city clerk, I'm sorry, the city manager will be writing down all the questions that we hear, and we're going to respond to the questions that all of you raised at the end, and I'm kind of waiting to see a few hands raised, I don't see any hands raised yet. But we will be taking down all the questions and then responding them. I see Janet Fogarty, former Mayor Fogarty, please go ahead. Unmute yourself. Can't hear you yet, Ms. Fogarty.
Okay.
There you go. You're, you're coming in good.
Thank you. First, I'd like to compliment the staff and the consultant, how organized this process is for us in the community. I, I really do appreciate all that thoughtfulness. I'd like to say that our goal should be to make sure that no neighborhood is isolated from the rest of the city. Although we want to provide cohesiveness in a neighborhood, we also want to provide cohesiveness in the whole community as well. In determining the area of a district, I hope you'll keep in mind the fact that barriers like El Camino Real should not be a barrier to the cohesiveness of the community as a whole. The goal should be to make all residents feel as though they are included in the community of Millbrae. The CVRA should be about inclusiveness rather than about divisiveness in our town. The ability to influence should refer to influencing the city as a whole. With that in mind, I suggest that it might be best accomplished with an at-large mayor in four districts. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fogarty. Mr. Chan, Nathan Chan.
Hello, can you hear me?
Coming in very well, Mr. Chan.
All right.
Never mind, go ahead, sorry.
Okay. Thanks for this opportunity to comment on this important matter. I actually want to echo the previous commenter's proposal to have a at-large mayor and four district elected council members. I think it's very important to have at least one of our elected officials represent the entire city and keep the interests of the entire city in mind. I've seen districts in certain other jurisdictions lead to sort of district-by-district contention and council, elected only looking out for the people in their district rather than thinking of the city as a whole. I think it'd be great if at least one person had that sort of mandate to look, to keep an eye on the entire city's best interests. I think another reason to go with an at-large mayor is that at least Millbrae's history in terms of implementing rotation has not always worked out for the best. And so I think it would be great to have a clean election for the position of mayor. I've observed that the mayor position is still going to probably be a first among equals on the council. So you know, it's not as if the, we're electing a, someone with that much more power than the, the rest of the council, but I do think that it's, it's much cleaner to have a, an election for the mayor position. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chan. Jean Wong, Ms. Wong.
Good evening, Mayor Schneider and council members. My name is Jean Wong, a longtime resident of Millbrae. I'm very excited that Millbrae is transitioning to district elections for city council members. I would like to see our new district map be drawn following Millbrae's current neighborhoods, to the extent possible, of course. I believe that current neighborhoods, as we know them, are naturally communities of interest since residents often relate to the neighborhoods in which they live, and they're familiar with the schools, you know, the parks and, and the parks and amenities that are available in their neighborhood, so they, they have this natural affinity towards the, the communities in which they live. So by keeping to these existing neighborhood boundaries, I believe that voter confusion will be minimized and resident support of the district mapping process will be increased. I also like Millbrae to retain its current five-member city council and annual rotation of council member to the office, of a council member to the office of mayor and vice mayor. The current governing structure, I believe, has served Millbrae well over the decades. And it's no reason to, there's no real reason to make a change at, to an at-large major election process at this time. I think by having a rotation process, we are able to develop new, new leadership, develop more experience for, for future leaders. And just in overall, it's a, it enables the city to see and experience different types of leadership more reasonably, and also it, it enables us to figure out and also determine the type of, of leaders that we want for the, for, for future elections. It's also interesting to note that all cities in San Mateo County follow a mayor rotation process, except for San Bruno, who actually elects their mayor at large. So with, with the rotation process in mind, several years ago, city council, I believe, wrote Millbrae's mayor rotation protocol for no real justifiable reason other than what appears to me to be a personal strife against a council member in line for the rotation. So Millbrae was without a mayor for several months as a result of this fiasco. If we maintain our mayor rotation process, I would like to ensure that, to ensure that history will not repeat itself, I think it's critical that the rotation process cannot be at the will or discretion of city council members. The rotation, the mayor rotation must be written into city code and be complied with like any other city code or ordinance. And it should not be council members who decide who should be the next mayor of Millbrae. So thank you very much for the opportunity to comment.
Thank you, Ms. Wong. Mr. Joe Torezzi.
Thank you. Yeah, I really appreciate having this opportunity. I haven't really fleshed out all my thoughts since I'm just learning about this, but I guess some of my initial thoughts, I'll just toss them out. I like the idea of either using existing neighborhood boundaries or school boundaries as sort of natural communities of interest. Seems like those are sort of inherent, existing boundaries that would, would fit that, that definition. In terms of the option for the mayor, my initial thought is that I like the current rotation system, although I agree with, with the prior speaker that, that, that I think the the protocol that's currently used, it seemingly is sort of an unofficial thing, and I think it needs to be somehow codified so that we don't have the, the kind of confusion and contentiousness that we've had several times in the past, past decade, so that it's more written into some kind of code or enforceable practice as opposed to just a, like a recommendation or whatever it is now, but it seems like it doesn't work all the time effectively in this current format. So those are my initial thoughts, and I look forward to hearing more other people's ideas and learning from them. And at this point, still flexible and formulating and refining my ideas. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Torezzi. I don't see any other hands raised. City clerk, do you have anybody on the phone that's reached you? And if you might tell them how to unmute themselves to join us?
Yes, you can. If you're dialing by phone, you can press star nine to raise your hand.
And while we're hoping for a few more hands to be raised, may I ask our attorney and the consultant, we have many languages spoken in Millbrae. How are, and I know we've got translators, do the translators have anyone in their rooms that may want to speak and need to be translated?
Mayor, I, I can see everyone who's in the rooms, and I don't see anyone.
Can we?
Javier just needs to, if, if he needs to communicate to the council, flip the switch back to what he did previously, because we can't hear him if he's trying to speak.
Can I ask the translators to please ask the people that they have with them, that if they want to comment, we would love to hear from them? And if not, there are other meetings and it is in writing, we just want to make sure that we are accessible to them. And if there are people who've spoken at our first meeting, you're more than welcome to speak at this meeting too. You're more than welcome to add to the, add your comments, or please, and I do see the Quigs, I'm not sure which Quig. If you could please state your full name. Dan or Kathy, you're still muted.
Yes, we're both here, it's Dan and Catherine Quigg, and we like the idea of no, at-large mayor, no, which one?
We like the five.
The five council members with the rotating mayor, I think that's what I'm saying. I think that works well. You know, that interest that you were talking about, I'm still a little, I'd like to understand it a little bit better. Millbrae, as we all know, is, is, is very diversified and, and I, I don't know how we would fit in, so we're just still kind of trying to learn how it is working. And I think Dan wants to say something.
If we're making a division in five parts, as five city council members each having a district, what I would like to see is the district would run from east to west. And that way, everybody would have an opportunity, every council member would have an opportunity to represent the business community. And I think that each, each district, if they were east and west, would very, be very evenly diverse with a group of people that would be represented individually by individual council members. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And city manager, you got the question there, more clarification on communities of interest.
I did, yeah, we can address that after the public comment.
Thank you. Christopher Del Negro.
Yes, hi, this is Christopher Del Negro, out of the Meadows community. I do agree that I liked five council members with a rotation instead of four plus a mayor. I also want to reiterate something I've heard from quite a few individuals, which is that we do have centers of gravity for certain elements in our communities, schools and parks. You know, we do have a number of schools that kind of sit in their own communities and parks that are spread out through our, our city that actually are centers of gravity for our community. And you know, we also have this new Central Park and a new Recreation Center, Community Center that kind of sits at the heart of the city, that kind of should be a, a centerpiece to where these communities intersect. That's my two cents for the night.
Thank you, Mr. Del Negro. Mr. Torezzi.
Yeah, if I could just add a few comments, I, I guess my, my, my biggest concern would be that we don't get a, a lot of input, and then at the end, people complain, so I, I mean, I think, I think the city's doing a pretty good job of getting the word out. I've heard about this from, from several different people. But I had a couple of thoughts, I'm wondering if there might be a way to use the schools as a, as a means of outreach, you know, to, to put together some kind of a packet that be, that that could be given out to students to bring home to their parents as a way to get their attention. I think parents tend to pay more attention to stuff that's coming from the school, maybe. And then also, maybe you'd want to use some of the existing service organizations in the city as a means to, to convey the message about this process and encouraging people to participate and, and pay attention and not, not wait till the end and then complain about you know, a, a result that they don't like because they didn't take part in, in the process. I think involvement is, is really key here, so any, any things like that that you can do to, to, to get the word out, I think would, would go a long way. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Torezzi. Looking for hands, I know that there are 28 people on the Zoom call. If there are members watching, we're live streaming right now, city manager.
That is correct, Mayor.
If there is someone that is watching us on TV, on Comcast, or U-verse, or on their computer, what phone number should they use, Eduardo, to call in?
That phone number is 1-669-900-9128.
Thank you. And I do have a couple of new hands, Jean Perry, please go ahead.
I realize that there are at least five people who, although legally they can't be a community of interest, really in truth are, and that is our five, five sitting, city council members. Is it public information where the five of you reside?
I'm going to add that to the city manager's list, Jean, go on, keep, keep on going.
Because I, the reason I asked that is you five will be voting on this and, and and you really do, I believe, live pretty much in a cluster. And so I'm concerned that the mapping is going to be skewed so that, to carve out five districts each with a present sitting council member.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. Ms. Wong.
Thank you. I just wanted to add to Mr. Torezzi's comments about additional outreach to the community for greater participation. I, I would like to suggest that, that perhaps the city can play some advertisements or some sort of communication in local language newspapers, a Chinese newspaper, Spanish newspaper, whatever, to, to see if we can increase the outreach. I don't know if that's in the plan, but that may be one avenue to, to activate the community a little bit more.
Thank you, Ms. Wong. City manager, do you want to answer a couple of these questions and then and then we'll get to the community of concerns question, and that'll give some more people a chance to raise their hand, although I just have a new hand. It says Lou, if you could please unmute yourself and I did, give us your full name, please.
Lou Sandrini. I appreciate all that has been presented. I support the mayor rotation. However, the voters need to know that through administrative malfeasance, last year's Mayor Hollibur and City Administrator Williams did not take advantage of an opportunity to avoid being pressured into establishing districts. Last year, Yu Yu wrote to the city addressing the establishment of voter districts. He got no response then, or a month later when he again contacted the city. Mayor Hollibur and City Manager Williams should have acted responsibly by responding to Yu Yu and discussing his concerns with regard to voter representation. They could have tried to work out options that might have satisfied his concerns, especially on such an important matter, and the fact they felt there were no violations of the Voter Rights Act, and Yu Yu had not presented all the information required by the act. This blatant disregard for responsible management and disrespect for a voter was gross malfeasance. Instead of using good, responsible, professional and common sense, they abandoned their jobs and responsibilities and ran to a lawyer. This forced Yu Yu to seek relief for the California Voters' Right Act, and that got us here. Yes, there's no guarantee, no district solution would have been founded, found, but not doing the right thing a year ago was gross administrative malfeasance. And the voters should know this, although it's too late. But we should not have to listen to Mr. Williams and the council members cry that they could not do anything acceptable to avoid the city being forced. that they could not do anything acceptable to avoid the city being forced to establish districts and try to blame Yu Yu. Hold them accountable personally however you can. They're wasting a lot of money.
Thank you, Mr. Sandrini. So while we're waiting, ah, a new hand, uh, Mr. Del Negro.
Sorry, I was just lowering my hand, actually.
Oh, okay. It just, no worries. All right, uh, city manager, why don't you try to answer a couple of those while hopefully more members are trying to call us or raise their hands?
Okay, let me start with, um, the first question, I think it came from Catherine Quigg. She wanted more explanation on the, um, communities of interest form. So maybe Paul Mitchell could describe that a little bit more detail. And while he's describing it, if I could have our city clerk um, share the community of interest form on, uh, on the screen. We can talk everybody through it. And I think, um, and Paul, correct me if I'm wrong, I mean, some of the conversation this evening about neighborhoods, school districts, um, the business community is, is exactly what the communities of interest and how they evolve under, under the act, correct?
Yeah, exactly. Um, communities of interest, you should think about, uh, as you sit in your home or where you're working or where you ta, take your kids to school. What really makes your community? Um, is it bound together by people who like to walk their dogs to a certain dog park and, you know, go to certain restaurants and uh, go to a certain church or use a certain facility like a senior center or go, you know, utilize, uh, educational programs that are in the city. So any of those things that kind of define who somebody is, who is their community? Um, and then within that, the communities of interest can oftentimes rise up to those protected classes like an Asian, Latino or African American community. Um, but oftentimes there's non-racial elements that bind those people together. So in a redistricting that I'm working on, there's a Cambodian community and they have a Cambodia town and they have certain shops. And they have, uh, an annual festival and they have, uh, kind of a relationship to the city as a cohesive uh, community. And so that would be an example of a community of interest. And we want to identify these just as has been done tonight so that people can say, okay, there's a downtown business community. And how do we want to draw it within districts? So, uh, that community of interest forum that's on the screen right now is a, a form that allows members of the community to put down what their communities of interest are, describe them, give a geographic location, like it's at Main Street and First, um, or wherever. Um, and then talk about what, uh, you know, religious institutions or recreational activities or other things, kind of bind them together. Um, you know, get into issues maybe about if they consider themselves a suburban or exurban or downtown community of interest. And then just tell the city about their community. And, um, it is a great part of the redistricting process. It's one in which we always learn about, uh, cities more deeply, um, by hearing from residents about what makes them, you know, a part of the city. So it's, there are some subjective elements to it. Somebody might say my community of interest is, you know, something you've never heard of. Um, but I, and there is no community of interest that is not allowed. It's really just an open-ended, uh, way to have a conversation within the redistricting process.
So are there any, any additional questions from the public in the explanation of communities of interest?
I'm looking, feel free to raise your hands, um, Ms. Quigg, if that helped. Um, or if you've got follow-up questions, we've got the time.
And you can log on to our website, um, you know, again, for information. Um, and the website that we are using again is, um, is up here. Eduardo has it and the address is configuremillbrae.org. So remember that configuremillbrae.org and all the information is available. And then the telephone number, again, Eduardo, if you can give everybody the telephone number again, that people can call.
Yes, uh, that would be, uh, six five zero two five nine two three seven three. That's our main number for admin office here. We'll have staff, uh, available to uh, be as helpful and answer any questions that we can.
And we have, we do have Chinese, Chinese and Spanish speaking staff as well. So when people call in, uh, we'll be able to, um, you know, get, get people that are bilingual to assist them.
Excellent. Sorry for interrupting. And that phone number, that's one of our standard city of Millbrae phone numbers. Is that from eight to five? What are the hours of operation? Or will return their phone call?
Eight thirty to five.
Eight thirty to five. And that is not the phone number for anybody watching us live right now. That is the Zoom phone number. Or is it the same phone number?
It's different. Uh, the Zoom phone number is, is, is different. The phone number we just gave, that is here for our, uh, to our city hall administration office. Which is different than the, the phone.
But tho, those are for verbal inquiries. Maybe somebody doesn't have a computer or they would rather just call, you know, staff for more information. Um, so that's, that's just a number to call for information if people don't want to use our online.
And then I have two hands raised, follow-up questions I am hoping for communities of interest. Um, Catherine Quigg.
Um, yeah, thank you. So I kind of heard everything at the very beginning about communities of interest. Um, and I don't see any of that in Millbrae. And I'm thinking, why am I not seeing that in, in Millbrae? And even after hearing it the second time, I'm still perplexed. Do, do we need to use that? I mean, this city is, is, is small and we're diversified. I, I, I just don't know where that fits in. Do we have to have that? Do we? Question.
Yeah, no, I, and I, and I think, and Paul, jump in here, um, because I just know enough to be dangerous. Um, and I think maybe it goes to, to Lynn, to Lou Sandrini's comments about, you know, well, the city obfuscated this and we, we didn't actually. This, this is something that we are small. We are a, a, a community, um, that, um, we, we don't have, you know, specific neighborhoods, uh, of ethnicity. I mean, our ethnicity is, is, uh, throughout the city, throughout the community. Geographically, we're small. Quite frankly, this law doesn't make sense, uh, for a city the size of Millbrae with our population um, and our, and our, our diversity that's spread out um, as well as our geographic boundaries. But Kathy, to answer your question, you know, we need to do this because, you know, again, um, the city council has discussed this. We've got a lot of advice and you know, it's do this or expose the city to, you know, significant millions and millions of dollars in litigation that the city of Santa Monica is going through right now. And unfortunately, the state Supreme Court has been very slow to make a decision on Santa Monica, um, as cities like Millbrae up and down the state of California are waiting for that decision. And if the state Supreme Court rules in favor of Santa Monica, um, then we can reevaluate, you know, what we're doing. And that's, that's in the adopted resolution of the city council. Um, but, so to answer your question, yes, the communities of interest are required, Paul, by law. Um, it is something under the California Voters' Rights Act, um, that is necessary to help form the districts and, and draw the maps.
Yeah. And I think that we can think about communities that have already been talked about, like there's already discussion about the, um, uh, kind of business area of the city. Um, we're doing redistricting up and down the peninsula. So we're doing redistricting in San Mateo and Burlingame, um, Redwood City. Um, and, you know, things like, uh, communities that are kind of near those transportation corridors, um, that are near, say, the Millbrae station. That area might say, well, we have different issues in our city than maybe people who live in areas that are more, you know, hillsides or more spread out homes, uh, or people might say that the people who live near the golf course have different concerns than people who live, uh, near the bay. So that's the way that we think about those communities of interest in redistricting. And a lot of it is to draw districts where the community will see those lines and say, oh, that makes sense. They've drawn these districts so that, that, you know, downtown, more densely populated area has an effective opportunity to elect a candidate they choose. And then there's also a district that allows the hillside community to elect a candidate they choose. So that's what we're talking about when we're talking about communities of interest.
Kathy, did you want a follow-up question? If not, you're, you, you haven't muted yourself.
Oh, sorry.
I took it. All right.
Dan wanted to speak.
I would like to follow up on that.
Okay, follow up, Dan, and then I've got Joe Trezey and Nathan Chan.
Okay. What I would like to follow up on, listening to his comments about districts. My comment didn't get answered. Uh, my comment was that we should, we have to divide into five districts if we're going to have five council representatives with a rotating mayor. And I support that. The thing that I said, which I think makes sense is to have our districts go east and west. And the reason I like to see them go east and west is because then every city council member has a representation in the business district of the city. In addition to that, every city council member represents people in the transit area, in the mid side part of the city, and also in the hills of the city. So every council member, uh, has representation throughout the districts in the city, whether it be on the east side or the west side or in the middle of the city. So I like that approach and I, you know, I, I didn't hear that that may not be acceptable to divide districts up. Also, if we divide into five districts, we're a city of a population under twenty-five thousand. So that would mean that each district would have a population of a little under five thousand. If I'm understanding that correctly, that we have to divide into five equal type districts. So, you know, I'd like to get an answer on that east, west and the division of, of the population, whether it's got to be right around five thousand for each district. Thank you.
Yeah, so I'll take a stab at that. And, and Paul and Kim, our attorney, if I, uh, if I misstate here, just, just jump in. But Dan, the reason why specifically we didn't answer that question is because we don't want to influence the community's drawing of maps, right? That's where we go to these communities of interest that you're free to, to draw a map and submit it to the city. And, and so really there's no answer to your question, you know, agree or disagree, you know, at this point in time. Um, because we as a city want to get the, you know, information out, get those communities of interest, get input from the community um, to draw maps as they see fit and then recommend those to the city council. Um, in terms of, uh, in terms of the, um, population by district, um, yeah, I mean, that's correct. And that's what Paul Mitchell will be doing because not only are we going to receive maps, um, from community members, communities of interest, but also the technical aspects of Paul balancing out, um, the demographics, uh, in terms of balancing out the districts. Um, and Paul, in terms of, as, as I understand it, in terms of, for lack of a better word, priorities, you, you start with the population, right? And so the goal is that standard deviation, I think, ten, no, no more than 10% of a population difference in any district, but we're striving for 5% because 5% is kind of the best practices that, that are used. Um, and then from there, um, certainly, um, uh, ethnicity and, um, you know.
Communities of interest and yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I guess, I guess those, those are the two parts. But, but first starting with overall population and then getting into, you know, the ethnic makeup, right, of, of the potential districts.
Yeah, so, um, yeah, definitely, we, we would definitely want to start with publicly drawn maps. And so if, uh, the caller wants to draw maps that go in this construction that he's been thinking about, he's more than welcome to draw those maps and the program that you'll be having will help members of the community draw those maps and be able to see their relative population size as they grow. Um, so we will be looking at this with the total population of the city. We'll be looking at any community of interest input that we get, any draft maps we get. Um, we'll be looking at the neighborhood boundaries as potential ways to, you know, decide where to put lines. We'll be looking at the ethnic composition of the districts, um, not as the predominant factor, but as one of many factors that we're going to be looking at. Uh, the one thing I did, and this points to one of the questions that somebody else in the community had. One thing we will not be looking at is where, uh, incumbents live. Um, when we do redistrictings, we ask to not be told where the incumbents live. Um, we don't want to know. Uh, we want to let the lines be drawn based on, uh, the traditional practices, the Fair Maps Act, the equal population, uh, utilized neighborhoods and communities of interest. And the reality is that at the end, when their commission is, when the city is adopting their lines, they, you're right, they might know where they live. And as long as all the maps are drawn in a open, fair, transparent way and the line drawers aren't using that information to kind of gerrymander people into their districts, then, um, if we have three draft plans that the commission, that the city's considering, then, uh, you know, they can choose whichever plan they want based on whatever criteria they want, but we won't know where people live.
Yeah, thanks, Paul. And I, I think that goes, um, to Jean Perry's comment earlier.
And I, I see that Jean has raised her hand again. Let's go to Joe Trezey and Nathan Chan. And we still have a set of questions that have been asked that have not been answered yet. You're not forgotten.
Uh, thank you. This is Joe Trezey again. Um, I just wanted to reiterate my, my initial thoughts that neighborhoods and and, uh, school attendance areas might serve as a, a logical starting point at least to, to start thinking about these districts. And, and to that end, I'm wondering if the staff could, could post, um, neighborhood map and school attendance map on that configure Millbrae website so that people could at least see where those boundaries are. And maybe that will, will prompt some thoughts as to how the lines might be able to be drawn. Um, and then while I was listening, I thought about another, uh, perhaps another, um, community of interest might be, um, apartment dwellers versus single-family home areas. And I'm wondering if, if there's a map available that would show where the apartment areas of Millbrae are to see if perhaps that might be a community of interest. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Um, Nathan Chan.
Yeah, I just wanted to take, uh, some time, uh, to answer actually the previous comments raised by the, the previous two speakers. So in terms of, uh, community of interest within Millbrae, um, I can think of several. Um, so one is, you know, there are certain parts of Millbrae that are significantly more vulnerable to flooding and sea level rise than other parts of Millbrae. I've been hearing for years about flooding occurring in the Marina Vista, Aviador and Landing Lane neighborhoods. Um, I know the city, uh, has been working to fix those. Uh, city manager Williams had a report a couple of meetings back about that. But the fact that this continues to be a problem does seem like it's not, you know, it could be higher on the council's priority list. And that might be, uh, enhanced if a commu, if that were to be a community of interest, uh, that could be able to elect their own council member from their own district. Uh, and the reverse is true, uh, up in the hills, uh, those areas are more, um, uh, are more vulnerable to wildfire risk, um, definitely uncomfortable to think about, but unfortunately very much a reality in our changing climate. And again, uh, if a council, if that was a community of interest that was, uh, able to elect a council member from a single district, uh, that council member will certainly hear those concerns and be able to bring that as a priority to the city council meetings. And then, uh, in response to Mr. Trezey's comment, um, there's actually a great, um, map of zoning map of Millbrae. You can see how much of the city, uh, on the city's planning website, I believe. You can see how much of the city, uh, 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 allows for only single-family homes today. Um, and their apartment buildings tend to be concentrated, uh, along El Camino, along Richmond Drive, along Millbrae Avenue. Um, and so these are also the areas where there's a higher percentage of renters, um, in the city. Uh, something I also remember from attending many council meetings is that, uh, while state, when state law, uh, passed a uh, rent gouging industry, uh, uh, ord, law to, uh, protect tenants from uh, overly burdensome rent increases, uh, that there were a number of cities that passed urgency ordinances uh, to make sure that a loophole that was in that law, uh, could, didn't, uh, catch too many tenants. I don't think Millbrae was passed such an ordinance. If their renters were a community of interest and were represented in a district, again, I think the council may have taken this up as a priority. So three communities of interest right there that I can see, I will certainly provide that feedback in the form. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chan. Ms. Perry.
I recall in the first meeting, Mr. Mitchell said that the CVRA covers only districting, but does not cover governance. And I guess the exception to that is whether we, whether it's decided to have four districts versus five. But, but my question is, is there any way in this process? If we, if five districts are selected with mayor rotation, is there a legal way to codify how that rotation happens? And the second question is, oh, I think I just forgot it. Second. Oh, if assuming possibly all five current city council people are not in five different districts with the new redistricting, what is the mandate for when an election will occur? So that someone who was elected before redistricting will then have the opportunity to be elected for the district that they now reside in.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. I have no other hands raised. Eduardo, do you have anybody on the phone?
I'm not seeing anyone with their hand raised.
Okay, so city manager, if you are prepared, this meeting didn't really have a close time, just a time check. We're at 8:35.
I think we have some questions that are still floating out there. And I think Mr. Mitchell is going to answer Jean's question.
Okay. No, 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 I know we still got some questions to answer, just whether it's you or Mr. Mitchell. Go ahead.
So the last question she asked was one that comes up and I'll answer that real quick that when the districts take effect in, after you guys adopt seats, whether it's four or five, you will be identifying not only where those districts are, but what number each district will be and when those elections will come up. Presumably if you're in four districts, it'd be two each election cycle. If you're in five districts, it would be three in one election cycle and two in the other. And you'll go through this process of identifying the numbers and identifying when those elections are up. And it would be common practice to look at your map and determine, okay, what's the, what's the date at which this incumbent is going to be seeking reelection? Let's put them in a seat that aligns to, you know, their election date coming up when they're going to be done with their term. But one thing that redistricting doesn't do is it doesn't, you know, kick anybody out of office. If you were elected in 2018 and your reelection is in 2022 and you're in a district that is up in 2022, you'll just run for that seat and it'll be normal. If you're up in for election, if you're elected in 2020 and your election's not until 2024, even though we, we did the redistricting, you can be put in a seat that's up until 2024 and you're going to be having your election aligned to your election date. That, the reality is that redistricting in fact takes effect over two election cycles. The districts that come up in that first election cycle, those districts are in fact, in the first two years, you'd have a hybrid where you'd have two council members or three that are elected in the at-large system and two or three that are elected in the new by district system. It's not until after 2024 that everybody will have been elected by districts. Now, one of the challenges can be, let's say you have two incumbents in a district. If you have two incumbents in a district and one is 2022 is when their term ends, the other one's 2024 when their term ends, you can determine what election date and what number you want to put for that seat. We actually had in San Mateo, they decided their last district and district number by flipping a coin. And so there's, you'll have some process for determining that numbering. If somebody is in a council district and they're not turned out until 2024 and it's been numbered in a way with an election date in a manner that it is open in 2022 and they're sitting there saying, well, I'm not up for reelection until 2024. Then they could theoretically run for the seat in 2022. And if they won, they could vacate the seat that they had earned in the at-large election system prior to the redistricting. So there is a way for somebody to run for a seat that it comes up early. The inverse can happen. They are coming up for reelection in 2022, but the district is numbered and ordered in a way that its election is actually in 2024. They get to take a two-year break from the city council. And when the election comes up for that district, they can then run for it then.
And I would, Paul, one of the other comments, I think it was Jean Wong made that that she would like to see us advertise in newspapers and stuff and get the word out. And, and I admit, when I first started this, I'm like, all right, we, you know, we got to get all the newspapers, we got to get the ads out. And I'm like, how much is this going to cost us? And by the way, just so everybody knows, this process in Millbrae to go through district elections, and this goes back to Lucian Dreneska, is going to cost us over $300,000 when it's all said and done. Our system wasn't broke. It didn't need fixing. But unfortunately, California Voters Rights Act and municipalities up and down the state of California are extremely frustrated with this law. We, we, we had to do it to avoid, you know, costly litigation and some other issues. But just so you know, fiscal responsibility is something that this city absolutely always has at the forefront. And having to spend this much money is something that, you know, obviously I can't speak for the, I mean, I'll speak for the council there here, but they didn't take lightly. It's expensive. And, you know, so anyway. So with that, I was told, well, Tom, that's not what you want to do. We don't want special interests to submit maps, you know, online. We want to keep it within Millbrae and, and the Millbrae voters or potential voters, you know, as Paul, as Paul had mentioned. So we, what we want to do is really spend our money to try to get the word out locally to Millbrae citizens and, and not spend our money advertising in newspapers that are regional or anything like that. And then we also kind of avoid this potential issue of special interests outside the city submitting maps and have to, you know, kind of manage through that. So Paul, is that kind of a, in a nutshell, a correct response to, to that?
Yeah, I definitely think that you want to get the word out. You definitely want to have Millbrae residents talking about the community. And I think utilizing the public hearings, utilizing the community of interest forum. And you could do outreach. I mean, I think sending a press release on this or having information on your website is important to any local media that you might have. There have also been agencies that have, say, put materials out in any forums or materials that they mail out to residents. We have one city, I think, that where they send out the power bills. And so they put in the power bills, a little note about redistricting. So doing things like that to try to reach the residents is great and getting their involvement because that's who you really want to have be helping shape the lines for you.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. City manager, before you go forward, could you please say what we just talked about in our special council meeting prior to this? The mailer, the reason we're going with the mailers directly mailed to people's homes.
Yeah, I just want to be cautious. Joan, if you can step in here, I mean, we got to be careful because that was.
That was a closed session.
Session, yeah. But what we do, and what we have mentioned publicly is that we are sending out postcards. You know, as Mr. Mitchell said, we are going to, you know, put this information, our utility bills we have and are sending out press releases. We will be going, I think, as Mr. Teresi had mentioned, you know, getting out to, you know, our, our local community groups and, and we will be doing that. And I think also with Mr. Teresi's input about different maps, Paul, I thought that was a good idea and I think we could do it. We could, we could add our land use map. We could add our, we do have a neighborhood map and we can post our school, elementary school boundaries.
Yeah, so what we can do is the land use map, we definitely would want to get, we could just put that up on a website as a static map. In the online mapping tool, we'll definitely want to get your neighborhood files. So if anybody from your GIS has the neighborhood files for us, we can utilize those and put those up in the district or mapping tool as well. And then we can look at any school boundaries. I don't, I want to be clear, school boundaries sometimes mean different things to different people. There are the school boundaries and you might be in multiple, you're probably in one elementary school district, aren't you? And one high school district, once.
So one elementary school district, but then instead of, we have four elementary schools.
Yeah.
But everyone goes to the same middle school and same high school. So.
Yeah, so the, what I haven't seen is you might have like attendance areas for different schools that aren't maps that we have access to. We would have access to the district map. So like the, you know, the footprint of the school districts, but I would guess that they just all overlap the city. So, yeah, but I think the neighborhood will be the most critical and we'll get that into the mapping tool. Definitely just want to get that from your GIS department. And we will have to do this thing that is a process where we have to do redistricting by using the census geography, like census blocks. And sometimes census blocks can be weird shapes. Sorry, our Spanish language came onto the mainline.
I think it's been fixed.
The, the census blocks are sometimes weird shapes. And so we might have a neighborhood, you say, Paul, the neighborhood is a square. But when you gave it back to us in the software for redistricting, it has this like little tail on it. And it'll be because we have to actually use the census geography when we're doing it. So there's a process of getting those neighborhood files and converting them to the census geography.
Tom, were there other questions that you jotted down that public, the public brought up?
Mayor, I think that that is what I have in terms of our response to, to the questions. Yeah, I think we've covered it.
Okay. Public, members of the public, one last call. If you've got other issues or questions that you'd like to ask, also know that you can call the, the city phone call. I see that the Quig's hand is raised. We will be continuing to collect questions and adding responses to the questions, to the frequently asked questions on the configure Millbrae website. Go ahead, Mr. and Mrs. Quigg. You're still, there we go. Still mute, still muted, Dan and Kathy.
If we want to divide up districts, maybe an opportunity is to look at the old the old maps for voting. There was 22 districts in the city of Millbrae during the voting district. So maybe if we looked at voter districts, we, that might be a source to develop mapping. Because there was 22 separate districts and we used to have 22 precincts in the old days when we used to vote, you know, by person, not by mail. And that may be something that we might look back at and look at the 22 districts and say, maybe we can take and cut up these districts into five pieces of pie that would work out for the amount of people by district. And maybe that would be a way to approach it.
Thank you, Mr. Quigg. Okay, I'm not seeing any other hands raised. Any closing comments? City manager?
All right, this was great feedback from the community tonight. So I thank everyone for attending and more to come. Again, configuremillbrae.org is our website. So please let's get that word out. All the information is there. Eduardo provided the telephone numbers. We'll also provide the telephone numbers on that, on that website. And we'll just continue to get the information out and all of you, I mean, part of this process is all of you tonight. Please help us get that information out to your neighbors and, and to members of the community and that configure.org website address. So just, just thank you for being here. I think we received some great information tonight and appreciate it.
I'm going to add a couple of additional reminders then. And this is on the website per city, city clerk. There was a staff memo for tonight's meeting. It is very informative. It will be up on configuremillbrae.org. Within that memo are, are announcements of the two Saturday meetings, which are in-person meetings. And part of the difficulty of going through this process during the time of COVID is not being able to see the map. So at those two Saturday meetings, they are not council meetings. They'll be informal. They'll be staff there to help you with the software and the discussion of maps can occur. So that the first one is December, Saturday, December 4th, and the second one is Saturday, December 18th. Both at 10:00 AM. City manager? The first one's at 10:00 AM.
Eduardo, can you, can you post the slide back up on the, for everyone?
The meetings. And I do encourage everyone to read the memo that covered today's special council meeting. It's very, very informative. And then our next and big decision meeting is Wednesday, December 8.
Yes. So the, so the Saturday, December 4th community workshop at 10:00 AM, that will be in the Great Room at the Temporary Recreation Center here in the City Hall Complex. That will be an in-person meeting. The Wednesday, December 8th, Special Council Study Session, that will be a Zoom meeting. The Saturday, December 18th, 10:00 AM Community Workshop. That's an extra meeting that will be in person, again, at the Great Room at the Temporary Recreation Center. And, and really this is a time that people can, you know, we'll have laptops there, people can tap into the software for, for drawing, you know, district boundaries to propose that to the city council.
Thank you. So with that, Mayor, please go ahead, Attorney.
As your city attorney, I just wonder if it's worth reinforcing that this issue of an at-large mayor with four districts or five districts continuing the rotational of the mayor approach is a decision that the council will need to give direction on to our demographer. So Paul will need to know that to bring maps back for consideration in the new year by the community. So December 8th is really the last opportunity for this council to meet in a special council meeting setting, subject to the Brown Act and to be in a position to give that guidance to the demographer. The other two workshops we've talked about are not being structured as city council meetings. And the council will need to take action and give that kind of direction to Paul and redistricting partners in the context of a meeting. So I just want the community, it's not far, it's not far away. We, the holidays are upon us. December 8th is the, the evening. The, the meeting will be a special council meeting. That will be the opportunity for this council to take stock of all the community input it has received on that issue and give direction. So please keep that issue in the forefront and, and provide your input.
So Ms. Casman, yes. Thank you. That's perfect. And then to clarify, it would be most helpful to all of us then to get those forms, the community of interest forms done. We haven't set a due, a due date. I mean, there's no due date, there's no deadline date. But what would be a good time to get that information so that staff can get it ready for the December 8th meeting?
Well, I will let Paul perhaps take that because he is going to do the work in his, his talented firm will do the work and we have to have these maps available seven days before our first meeting in January. I mean, I imagine that we have this last community, community meeting in December, it's December 18th. I mean, I, I, I think people need to get the forms in and put in, you know, before the holidays, before Christmas. You would probably like it even sooner, but I, don't wait. Get your input in. But don't dawdle and don't wait too long in December because we do have the holidays. And we do have a seven day requirement to have this information open and available for inspection before it is considered. So there are restrictions here. Let's get it in. Everyone, get to work.
And Eduardo, just, you know, to pick up on what Joan says, one more time, if you can put up the schedule. And Eduardo, just, you know, to pick up on what Joan says, one more time, if you can put up the schedule. Because it is at the. Tuesday, January eleventh meeting, Tuesday, January twenty-fifth meeting, are when the draft maps will be presented. So everyone, you know, as, as City Attorney Casman just said, every, you know, it's, it's. We're under, we're under the timeline of the legislation and, you know, if we can get your maps in. The sooner the better, because February twenty-second, that meeting is the date, you know, by law. Or shortly thereafter, but, but no later than, than March first, does the council have to adopt the maps?
Thank you. I, I do see Councilman Fung, and then we're going to close. Close this meeting. Councilman Fung.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to echo some of the things that I've heard from the public comment a little earlier. We are here because we have been accused of having racially polarized voting. And we do have a city where fifty-two point three percent of Asian populations and. Between the black and Latino community, we have about twelve percent of our population. So in order to continue to engage the civic engagement, encourage civic engagement. And I understand that this is an expensive process to, to do, but I believe that it would be wise for us. To invest in ethnic media, to continue to encourage our, you know. Ethnic population to engage in this process here. After all, you know, transparency is a very important part of this process. And we've been accused of racially polarized voting and we want to make sure that we do this right. This is an important decision for our city. So investing in ethnic media, I think in the grand scheme of things, would be a wise decision. I just wanted to make sure I say that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Fung. Okay, if there, no more hands raised, it is.
Mayor, if I may, I, I think Councilmember Fung, you know, he does bring up a great point and, and we will be advertising. In, in some of the, the, the local ethnic newspapers. For sure.
Excellent. Thank you, city manager. With no other comments, thank you, city attorney. Thank you, staff. Thank you to, I'm looking for our new interpreter, Javier, and. I, I can't see her name, but thank you to our interpreters. Thank you to the public for attending. Remember, one last time, if you've got questions, to call our administrative office. Eduardo, the phone number is two five nine.
Two, three, seven, three.
Two, three, seven, three, two, five, nine, two, three, seven, three. And to please visit configuremillbrae.org and please. I hate to give you a November homework assignment or a Thanksgiving homework assignment, but please look at that form, community of interest. And send us the information so our demographer and staff can get us ready for December eighth. With that, thank you. Closing the meeting at eight fifty-six. And we will see you at our next city council meeting on Tuesday, November twenty-third.